Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we're going to ask Senior Planner, Sean Nicholas, to lead us.
Please stand. Ready? Begin.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present this evening.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, the approval of minutes from the prior meeting.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Thank you.
Sorry, second.
Okay. We can vote on that? And the minutes are approved with Vice Chair Murphy abstaining. Next, we have public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or an agenda item is asked to complete a request-to-speak form available from Madam Secretary. The completed form is to be submitted to her prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for the public comment portions of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Madam Secretary, do we have any speaker slips?
No, Chairman.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay. Great. Consent calendar, there's no consent calendar. Item number two, public hearing. Coastal development permit CDP 18-004 to allow a lot merger to combine two lots into one within a community commercial vehicular CCV zone located 25775 and 25781 Las Vegas Avenue. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Senior Planner Belinda Dynas will give the staff report.
Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, Chair McCann, Planning Commissioners, and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynas, staff planner for the proposed project on Las Vegas Avenue. This project is before you for review and approval of a coastal development permit 18-0004 because the proposed project involves a lot merger on a property located in the coastal zone and within the appeals jurisdiction. Here's an aerial of the immediate site. The subject site is located in Doheny Village on the west side of Doheny Park Road. The property is bounded by industrial uses such as major automotive repair cabinet and surfboard manufacturers and construction materials and sales. The property is located in the community commercial vehicular zone and within the FP2 floodplain district zone identified on the FEMA floodplain maps as Zone AO. The existing lots are vacant with residential units that have been demolished recently. There are temporary structures on site that will be removed and there are existing chain link fencing streams on the property. The existing parcel one is currently under construction. Three years ago, the applicant received approval of a coastal development permit for the merger of two lots and construction of a new office building on parcel one. This application would be an amendment to the prior CDP approval but procedurally must be heard by the Planning Commission for its full CDP because the property is located within the appeals jurisdiction. Staff worked diligently to expedite the review and streamline the hearing process for the applicant. This application involves the merger of parcel one and lot 24, which brings the property closer into conformance with the CCV zone minimum lot standards. While the CCV zone is intended for larger commercial uses with an emphasis on convenient automobile access, traditionally big box retail with large parking lots, the subject site and its surrounding properties are nonconforming to the standards of the zone. As you can see on the site plan to the left, the existing parcel one is shown in teal, which is a lot that is 50 feet by 130 feet and approximately 6,500 square feet in total area. The adjacent lot to be merged with parcel one is shown in pink and is currently 25 feet by 130 feet. Therefore, the proposed map to the right shows the new parcel one in yellow, which results in a lot that is 75 feet by 130 feet and approximately 9,750 square feet. Here's a chart showing the development standards relative to the CCV zone minimum standards. As you can see, the property is not compliant with the minimum lot size requirement, which is 15,000 square feet, and not compliant with the minimum lot width, which is required to be 100 square feet. The property does comply with the minimum lot depth requirement of 120 square feet. However, as previously mentioned, the proposed lot merger does bring the project closer into conformance with the CCV zone standards. The Planning Commission must make the following findings. In order to support the coastal development permit, staff provides justification and analysis in the staff report as described in the draft resolution. Coastal access does exist approximately 1,000 feet south of the subject site at Capistramino Beach, and the project is considered a merger of non-residential lots with no impacts to existing public recreation. Staff recommends approval of the proposed project subject to the findings and conditions in the draft resolution. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the project and the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for staff on this item? Commissioner Nelson?
Good evening. Quick question or a couple of quick questions. This merger, as it relates to the 2015 CDP, does it change anything relative to whatever got done then?
None of the -- it doesn't change the improvements or the proposed project related to that prior approval. In fact, there are no improvement proposed for the merger of the third site in question. So at this time, the applicant doesn't have plans other than additional storage.
Okay. So then essentially what we're doing is approving, kind of erasing a line that divides two pieces of property?
Correct.
Okay. And then going to the, I was looking at that matrix of development standards, this gets us closer to that, does it still, it's developable though, I would imagine, just
Correct.
Because it's legal nonconforming?
That's correct.
So this wouldn't affect that in any way?
Not at all.
Okay. That was it? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Commissioner?
Yes, was there any consideration given to merging all three lots? Then the average of the two lots would be about 115, which would make that compliant.
I'm not quite sure I understand. The, there are three underlying lots. The first two lots were merged back in 2014, and then, and then there's a third lot that is being merged to combine it into one parcel. And so it is 75 foot wide.
Well, I was looking at the frontage. You have the 175 plus the 55?
No, so the frontage is actually 50 feet for parcel one?
Okay. That's not, I'm looking at the yellow parcel one, that's not 55?
If I may clarify, may I approach? So this is the combined 75-foot dimension. This is 50 here?
Okay.
And then 25 here?
And then this one is?
So this is all, I'll show you on the overlay, but this is the machine.
Right, so the whole property is what I was looking at, if they took all that together.
Okay. So Commissioner Donner is referring to the map on the right-hand side. The block along Las Vegas Avenue on the north side has different ownership. Felisa, if I can interrupt you for a moment, I think your mouse can show the arrow, so it acts as a point. There you go. It might be helpful. Okay. And so this entire block has different ownership, and so only recently that the applicant had been able to acquire the third lot. This parcel to the left is owned by the same owner of the Doheny Building Supply across the alley, and then different owners also are, have the automotive repair and the, I believe, another repair shop at the corner.
That's fine. I assumed they were under the same ownership, so that's, comment doesn't apply. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff? Commissioner Opal?
The only question ties to the resolution because you have a resolution for grading and then also for building permit. So you were saying that no one was going to build, so is that necessary to be part of the resolution if that is not the intent?
Public Works Department did provide comment on the resolutions, and so Matt Kunk is here to clarify those conditions.
Thank you. Quickly, since it's an update of the previous CDP, there was a grading permit associated with the previous improvements in project, so that language is lingering in this resolution. But there is no additional grading proposed as a part of this particular merger. Is that clear? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, with that, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers to speak on this item?
No, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And do we want to have any discussion on this item? I'll say, I think it's great to consolidate and kind of hopefully clean up and get rid of some of those little small lots that are pretty unusable, so the more we can consolidate and make it better, I'm in support of. I agree with the findings in the staff report that it does comply with the zoning code and so forth, so with that, I'm supportive of the project. And if no one else wants to, I'd be happy to make a motion for any other comments. I move to approve coastal development permit CDP 18-004 to allow a lot merger to combine two lots into one within the commercial, community commercial vehicular zone located 25775 and 25781 Las Vegas Avenue.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion and a second. And that item passes 5-0. Thank you. Old business, there's no old business, new business, workshop. We are all excited to hear about the Green Lantern projects that are being proposed. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Before I introduce Sean Nicholas, Senior Planner, who will give you a presentation, I wanted to give you a little bit of context. So Councilmember Paul Wyatt had met with some concerned residents of Green Lantern, and that concern generated from the initially Wave Hotel project, which came before you at a public hearing last year, I believe. And as part of that, they learned that there were some other hotels being proposed for Green Lantern, and they were, there were a number of concerns. And as part of that, Councilmember Wyatt and myself met with them again on March 15th and recommended this public workshop to provide a venue for concerned residents to be able to share some of those concerns, I mean, in anticipation of some of these projects coming before you. And I went to kind of hear what some of those concerns were ahead of time so that we could do our best to answer some of those questions in this workshop. I do want to indicate that we will not be going into a lot of detail in the particular projects because those will be coming before you in a public hearing, so it is a higher level review, and I would say that a lot of the concerns were more sort of cumulative in nature, and so we're going to address some of those this evening. We do have representatives from community development and public works that are here to answer any questions that the Commission or the community may have later this evening. And I will indicate that after the presentation, we will take a five-minute break because we have a couple of diagrams, maps on the walls that we want people to be able to take a look at after they hear the presentation because there's some context associated with them, and then come back for some questions from the public and then the Planning Commission, some discussion. So with that, I will introduce Sean Nicholas.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Sean Nicholas, Senior Planner. I'm going to walk us through the main part of the presentation here associated with the various Green Lantern projects that myself and some of my planning colleagues are working on, as well as some of the improvements out there on Green Lantern. So just in general, the agenda for this workshop is to give a high-level overview, as the Director has stated, regarding all the proposed hotel projects on Green Lantern. I'm going to get into what the various zoning requirements are that we have out there associated with these projects, in particular, the two different sets of standards that apply. We're going to also have some presentation regarding the geotechnical review that's occurring both at this level and then to come, and then we're going to get into an introduction about the various ways in which height is measured in those two different zoning districts. We also have LLG, who is the city's traffic consultant, who is going to give a presentation regarding analysis in terms of individual and cumulative impacts of traffic associated with the proposed projects, and then get into the Green Lantern's streetscape improvements that the Director has also mentioned. Draft designs are on the board for Planning Commissioners and the public to take a look at during a break, and then open it up to receive public comments and then bring it back for Planning Commission feedback, discussion, and questions. So here is a map, just to give context in terms of the area in which we're talking. The yellow indicates the draft analysis, what you'll see in the proposals on the wall in terms of potential public improvements as they're currently designed. In the purple, we have the two projects associated with the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, the HDCP, and those sites that are located at PCH between Green Lantern and Shoreline. And you can see here, pretty much at the intersection of Cove Road and Green Lantern as it transitions into Scenic. And then here in red, you can see the three project sites that are located in the Dana Point specific plan, the DPSP. We're going to have lots of acronyms this evening, I know you're excited. And then the names of those hotels there along the coastal bluff, so pretty much all the inland hotels are in the HDCP and all the bluff-front hotels are located within the DPSP. So high level on, again, just an overview on all these projects. The Wave Resort is that first project that has already come before both the Planning Commission and City Council was approved by both bodies. It does include a 57-room hotel, a restaurant space, a visitor center, a 52-bed hostel, which was the revised design that went before the City Council, as noted in the HDCP, and it is currently under review by the Coastal Commission. There is a five-star hotel that those of you who are intimately familiar with the HDCP as I am, is also known as the Seaside Inn project. It is up to a 90-room project that is proposed at this time to include potentially more than one restaurant, as well as meeting rooms. We have had a preliminary application, very preliminary, and they are under their redesign associated with that feedback. The Lantern Point Hotel, which is at the corner of Cove Road and Green Lantern, includes a 53-room hotel. There is no restaurant, there is no public restaurant, and there is a rooftop pool proposed with this, but again, it is not public. It is proposed tentatively, current, according to their most recent application proposal to be closed by 10:00 PM. Again, this is in the Dana Point specific plan because this is the first of those bluff lot hotel sites, and is currently under city staff review. Here is the Boutique Hotel, as it's named, as it is the smallest of our hotel projects, only 19 rooms. There is no restaurant associated with this project, and it is currently under city staff review. And then lastly, we have the Cannons Project, which will include 102 rooms, will be two restaurants associated with it, and is also under currently city staff review. So as I've stated, the Wave and the Five-Star Resort are within the HDCP. The zoning of those two parcels are the same, which is visitor recreation commercial. The hotel is a by right permitted use in the project, so if the construction had already occurred and it was something else, you could turn it into a hotel by right, no conditional use permit or other entitlement would be needed. And also, the HDCP does refer back to the Dana Point zoning code, which is the DPCZ, for those of you keeping track of our acronyms, for parking and other standards not listed in the HDCP. Again, the Cannons, Boutique, and Lantern Point are all within the DPSP, zone coastal visitor commercial. The hotels and restaurants are noted in the DPSP as being the principal permitted uses, and that has always been the long-term view and vision of this site, and that's even before incorporation in 1989. So this has always been zoned that in terms of potential use. And it is important to note that the DPSP refers, does not refer to the Dana Point zoning code for other standards not listed. It actually refers to the Orange County zoning code, the OCZZZC, for parking and other standards not listed. So we're kind of dealing with four different sets, actually, of zoning code and specific plan requirements associated with evaluating potentially these different projects.
And I'm just going to clarify that it's not just the current Orange County zoning code, so if you went to the county's website and tried to pull up their zoning code today, it's actually the zoning code that was adopted at the time that the Dana Point specific plan was adopted. So it's an older version of the Orange County zoning code, and we have a copy of that, and that's the document that we reference for the requirements.
So with that, I am going to introduce Matt Kunk, who is our Principal Engineer in the Public Works Division, and he's going to be able to talk a bit about the geotechnical review in which we are currently going through. Mr. Kunk?
So the Public Works Department is tasked with the geotechnical reviews for these and various other proposals. As is not unfamiliar to the Commission, some of these are bluff top conditions. So this, you know, for reference, is the current geotechnical evaluation for the Cannons hotel development. So it's quite an in-depth process that we go through. The applicant provides an analysis that includes, you know, soil samples, geotechnical boreings, lab testing, computer-modulated stability analysis, what's all reviewed by our team, and it's a dialogue back and forth through the process. On the bluff side, again, as Sean explained, we're dealing with a number of different code, governing codes. But although, all the projects are required to establish the bluff edge, what's called the 50-year of erosion rate. So this is a professional opinion of the natural erosion that will occur on the site over the next 50 years. As we've seen, you know, recently at the Cannon, near the Cannons Hotel and the Overlook, there was some naturally occurring erosion. We don't, we don't know what the rate will be, right? We know that, we ask, and the code stipulates that the professionals provide us with the estimated in 50 years. Excuse me, as a part of the natural characteristics of that bluff and the reentrant geography that establishes over that erosion process, it could happen a lot, it could happen a little. But we do mandate, and the city code requires, that that be taken into account, which was not taken into account, you know, in years past when the Overlook was first built in the 20s or 30s, right? So we have a buffer built in. Again, they provide us with a structural stability analysis, which establishes how close to that bluff edge that these developments can be. For our non-bluff hotels, the two Headlands Hotels, you know, those are in a current hillside conditions. The Wave, of course, has the existing soil now, large retaining wall. So the geotechnical analysis for those projects looks at those retaining wall designs, those hillside conditions, the impact of any of the trails and the open space above those hotels. Also, as a part of the applications, we require that the applicant provide a conceptual shoring and excavation plan from their team, from a structural engineer. This tells the city, as well as the Commission, kind of the concept of how they're going to, how they're going to construct these, how they're going to dig these holes for the parking structures, how they're going to, again, design these retaining walls to allow the developments to take place. This can happen through, you know, shoring, through tieback systems, through various amounts of up-to-date engineering technology. And our review of that is always to ensure that there's no impact to the bluff and that the condition can be bettered in any way than is currently naturally there. So we're removing bluff material, we're replacing it with an engineered system, we're controlling the drainage and the water, which can be very detrimental to the erosion rate. So those are all taken into account. And then again, once the projects are approved by the Commission and come into construction, we do it all again, and we get into the nuts and bolts and the numbers and all the loads and everything in a in-depth geotechnical analysis for this specific project that was This is the slide I forgot about. So again, as Sean said, you know, the three proposed hotels are bluff conditions, where we're worried about bluff stability, bluff erosion. The inland hotels, we're worried about hillside retaining walls. Again, we go through a very extensive review of these projects for stability and all of these analyses.
Thank you, Mr. Kunk. So before I move forward again, I just want to highlight, as I love this map in terms of highlighting the different zones, but just where these are at, I'm going to now get into the analysis in terms of the different ways height is measured, both in terms of the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, the HDCP, and how the DPSP and ultimately the Orange County zoning code and how that impacts analysis for these bluff top lots. So starting with the Wave project, the one that has been approved, just for context, it is called, noted as Planning Area 4 within the HDCP. There are limitations for the site, being 35 feet and two, no more than two stories at any point. The HDCP dictates, in essence, three starting points in terms of how you measure height, and you take the ultimate height from the lowest of those three starting points. In this particular situation, for this project, it was taken from the finished grade just outside of the building. You can see here, this is an image directly taken from the HDCP, which is available on our city's website as well. This is, shows that the existing condition here in here, Shoreline, as it goes down, and it pretty much follows this line here to go down to Green Lantern. That's about a 20-foot drop or change in grade from Shoreline to Green Lantern. And so as you can see, there was always envisioned that there would be a stepping process and design to these sites in terms of 35 feet up from each of those locations, and as you can see in terms of the final design, it was 35 feet up, and this is a great example in terms of this elevation, you can really see how it follows, again, that topography. Similarly, on Planning Area 9, the five-star site, the Sea Cliff Inn, it is a 42-foot height limit, three stories. Again, those three limitations apply, as I noted in PA 4, but there are some additional requirements that were put onto these pads. In particular, as you could see, the pads could have been modified further on the PA 4, but there is a limitation on PA 9, Planning Area 9, in terms of a maximum finished pad height of 220, and that's from medium-high tideline. And also, it limits that, in terms of the roof ridge, that there we have our, there's the public improvements, this public trail system up here as part of the low-cost visitor serving recreational facilities that were developed, associated with the HDCP development, and no more than 30% of the roof line can cross that ridge to preserve, as it requires in the general plan, our public views from that trail system. So again, that ultimate design will be, once we know, we'll be able to evaluate, but there are some added even limitations on the Planning Area 9, but 42 feet is our limitation. Switching gears now to the Dana Point specific plan in our bluff lot. Switching gears now to the Dana Point specific plan in our bluff lot, bluff front lots. The Dana Point specific plan does call out 35 feet as our maximum height. It's important to note, there is no story limitation is set forth in the DPSP. Now, how that 35 feet is measured does refer back to, as the director said, to that Orange County zoning code as it was, as it was when incorporation happened and we adopted the DPSP locally. And how that occurs generally is you go five feet out from the finished surface or finished structure of the building, go down, there's my mouse, go down to finished grade, and then go up 35 feet. So on both sides of the structure, in essence, you'll do that, and then connect the lines. And then, for the primary building, you cannot exceed past that envelope. And there is provisions that allow for architectural projections and elevator projections, but in essence, that's the, the main analysis in terms of calculating the maximum height. Now, in this area in between, as it's shown here, there is the potential that a development could cut out and create parking or additional rooms in this area, because, as again, as I stated, it's five feet out and it hits whatever the finished gray surface is, which is the highest level open to the sky. So at that first point, it would hit. It's important to note, and I think as all our planning commissioners and obviously our residents out on Green Lantern will know, it's not only sloped out there on Green Lantern, from Green Lantern down to Cove Road or to the harbor, but a lot of these lots are sloped side to side as well. And so, in terms of ensuring staff working with our applicants to make sure we have strict compliance with the height limitations, we're working with them to develop a building envelopes that take into account, as I stated, front to back, but also side to side 35-foot height limitations. So this is an earlier rendition of the Lantern Point Hotel, the design has changed, but the important point to show is the level of analysis, and we line this up with their, with their proposed grading plan, preliminary grading plan, to make sure all of these analysis and these points are taken. So that height envelope changes with the grade in every direction, so it's the most extensive analysis we can do to ensure compliance, strict compliance with the 35-foot height limit. And then we can look at and analyze the different ways in which projections occur, because architectural projections, such as these wave elements shown here, can be up to 10 feet above with approval of a use permit. And then eight feet are allowed for encroachments, similar to, as you can see here, up to eight feet, as long as it does not exceed 10% of the roof area, and that's actually by right. With that, before I introduce Richard Baretto with Lynn Scott and Law and Greenspan, our traffic consultants, LLG, I think it's very important to also note that SEQA is being conducted for each of the individual hotel projects. So individually, SEQA is being conducted, so looking at noise studies, looking at WQMPs, and also, obviously, looking at traffic and traffic impacts that we know is of great concern to our residents on Green Lantern. And so, it's important to note that each of these are looking at their impacts on an individual basis, but also on a comprehensive basis. So that's really important, that we're trying to make sure as these projects are taking shape and, and coming into form, that we're looking at it as a whole, and so, and what that will mean to our street system. So with that, I'll ask, and turn it over to Richard Baretto, the principal engineer for LLG, to talk about, our traffic consultant, to talk about some of these issues and how that's analyzed.
Thanks, Sean. Evening, Chair McCann, other commissioners, Rich Baretto, Lynn Scott Long, Greenspan, principal there. Little background, we've been working with the city, I would say probably over 10 years now, maybe 15. And our role so far on a lot of these projects to date has been providing traffic support and looking over site plans, access, circulation, parking compliance, and then really taking a look at what those projects individually would do if they were built to volumes and conditions, primarily along Coast Highway and Del Prado. Since when we look at impacts of projects, we primarily focus at intersections and what have you. But with that, with the five projects kind of moving on concurrently, one of the things the city, Matt has tasked us with, was documenting conditions out in, on Green Lantern in particular, because of the residents that live out there, and then taking a look at what type of volumes are out there and what these projects cumutively could add to this collector street, primarily Green Lantern. So with that here, you know, the first slide here really just kind of summarizes what we would be looking at, you know, taking a look at existing volumes, current vehicular speeds out there, current on-street parking conditions that are out there, added volumes that these five projects would be generating to the section of Green Lantern, and then what those volumes would look like in the future under existing plus cumulative conditions. Next slide. Well, and with that, as we were starting our process, Ursula and Matt had informed us about certain things that we may want to touch on tonight, at least disclose some information that residents have, have actually put out there to date. They're talking about speeding on Green Lantern, especially at night, talked about, there was a comment about when data collection was made, is it on a 24-hour basis, is it during only daytime hours? There were some concerns about the blind curve as you travel southbound or northbound on Green Lantern from Cove to, to Santa Clara. And then there was some discussion or, or issues related to parking, and there's not enough parking out there, and how the hotels may exacerbate the parking condition out there as well. And then also, again, touching on added traffic that, to Green Lantern, that these five hotels would, would cumutively add. Relative to the wave, given it's a little further north, what, what we'll go through when I start talking volumes, they're primarily related to the ones that are, are south of Santa Clara, the three on the bluff side, and then the five-star hotel. Although, the, the wave with where it sets up and the access, you'll see some added volumes along that section of Green Lantern between Coast Highway and, and Santa Clara. And then if guests want to head down to, to the harbor, they'd be obviously using that section that we're focusing on. Next slide. Again, here, real quick, we, you guys live out here, Street of Green Lantern's a two-lane existing collector road, it's undivided, it's got parking on both sides of the street, sidewalks on post, some intermittent sidewalks on both sides of the street. Right now, the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour, it hasn't changed from 2005, based on conditions that we've seen back then, and studies that were done back then. Right now, there's two always stop control intersections that, that exist out there at Santa Clara and at Cove Road. We all know right turns in from Coast Highway exists, don't believe that will change anytime soon, even with the wave going on. So what you have out there is probably going to be, as it exists, as, as the, these five hotels would develop and operate. Next slide. This is just a real quick slide here, for, looking from Santa Clara South, it's the blind curve, kind of what we were talking about, some concerns that were raised from the residents. You'll see up on the right-hand corner, there's a warning sign there that has a suggested speed due to the curve and the conditions around there of 20, 20 miles per hour, as opposed to the, the posted speed limit of 25 miles per hour, recognizing, again, there is a curve as you head south. Next slide. This is facing northbound, you got residents on the south, on the, on the left side, on the bluff side, I think we're in close proximity to where the Boutique Hotel would end up going, right off the right side, and then off on the distance, you, that's probably the Cannon site. Again, this is looking northbound, about midpoint here on Cove Road, shows the conditions again. Next slide. Here, we're just north of Cove Road, I think, location-wise, I think off to the right is the Lantern Point Hotel site, and then you could kind of see the entrance there to the, to the chart house. And again, this is looking northbound here on Green Lantern. Next slide. This, again, was just a, a quick summary for us that we've included in, in prior stuff about proximity, locations to where the five hotels are. We can scan through the next one. Next slide here. Again, a real quick summary here of the five hotels we're looking at. And again, from a standpoint of future traffic conditions, you know, two of the, I think three of the hotels don't have any restaurants, two of them do, no, three of the hotels do, those are all count afforded in our projections. So all in all, when we're looking at future traffic projections, we're looking at full occupancy of the hotels, all 321 rooms, a vibrant restaurant attendance that's open to, to the public, not reserved for, for hotel guests only, from that standpoint. Next slide. You really can't, this is a terrible slide, even I can have trouble looking at this, but the bottom, this, this provides a, a quick summary of our forecast based on trip generation estimates for hotels and restaurant uses here. On the bottom, on the bottom there, apologize to, to the audience here, it's really hard to see, but on the order of a daily basis, we're looking at probably about, you know, 1,800 vehicles a day, both on the weekday and weekend, that these five projects cumutively could add to Green Lantern. Okay? Next slide. 1,800, 1,800.
Added to the thousand.
Exactly. And we'll, we'll touch on, we'll touch on the volumes there. So it's 1,800 daily trips on a weekday and a weekend. I think Sean touched on this a little bit already about part, hotel parking requirements, and which, which requirements would, which zoning code ordinance would apply. As far as we've looked at to date, we looked at three, three hotel projects from an access circulation standpoint, even parking, and everything we've seen to date is that they're either meeting or exceeding the hotel, the parking requirements of either the Headlands or the Dana Point specific plan zoning code. So that, just wanted to touch on that relative to parking for the hotel, for the proposed hotels. Next slide. Now we're getting into the data that we've collected to date with a focus on daily traffic volumes. So when we do 24-hour daily, daily traffic counts or speed surveys, there's a couple ways to do it, it's either video or pneumatic tubes. In this case, what we've done is we set out tubes out there over, over a weekday to collect data on a 24-hour basis to document existing traffic counts, as well, as existing speeds out there. Relative to posted speed limits, California Vehicle Code documents that when you post a speed limit out there, you post it at the 85th percentile speed, which essentially says, identifies at what speed do the majority of the, the motors out there travel a, a given roadway? Green Lantern's posted at 25 miles per hour, 85th percentile speed that we see out there is 27 on the weekday, 26 on the weekend. Historical information that we have, back in 2005, when we did 2005, 85th percentile speed was 29, so it was slightly higher on a weekday, and it was 27, slightly higher in a weekend. But more recent data that we're showing is that it just justified that the posted speed limit under current conditions right now is, is justified at 25 miles per hour. Next slide. Just a real quick tabula summary of what I discussed, don't have to spend time on this. We could continue. Daily volumes, what we have out there is on the order of, on a weekday, on the left side of, of the slide, about 2,100 vehicles a day, and it's not surprising, it's 50,000 in, 1,000 out, roughly, and that's on a weekend. On Cove Road, there's about 1,700 trips a day, 900 in, 900 out, no, you know, 1,800, 900 in, 900 out, 910, I think, is the number I have there, and about 890 on the, on the upward side. On the weekend, the daily volumes increase on, on Goat, Street of Green Lantern to about 3,500, so it's about 1,400 more than a typical weekday. And you can see on what happens on Cove Road, the volumes increase appropriately as well. So they're about 2,900. So they go from about 1,800 on a weekday to about 2,900 on, on a weekend, from that standpoint. Relative to volumes for the hotel, like we had discussed before, the primary added traffic that you're seeing on Green, Green Lantern has to do primarily with the four hotels south of Santa Clara, to some extent, a little bit from the wave, but on a daily basis, when we look at added volumes, we're about another 1,400 daily trips there. So from 21, 2,100 existing to an added 1,400 with the, with the five hotels. And then on a weekend basis, 3,500 existing, the hotels will add about 1,400 as well, given that the daily trip generation forecasts on a weekday and a weekend basis is about the same. Okay? High math gives you, again, you know, as a result, when you look at volumes, how they increase, they increase from about 2,100 to 3,600 on a weekday basis, and then on a weekend, it goes from 35 to about just under 5,000 daily trips. Relative to the capacity for the Green Lantern, Street of Green Lantern, an LOSA capacity is about 7,500 daily trips, with us being about 5,000 plus or minus. We're well, well within the capacity and LOSA capacity of this type of roadway and the classification of the city. And a lot of the stuff here, when we do assessments, I forgot to mention early, when we talk about level of service, capacities and what have you, they're all working off the city's established policies and criteria, as pointed out in this Dana Point circulation element. So we're using the city's criteria capacities to do this type of, type of assessment on a daily basis. Okay? Next slide. This one here was, again, talking with Matt, we probably wanted to take a closer look because of residents are concerned, we want to make sure we disclose and, and address it. So this is a, a graphic that takes a look at stopping sight distance around the blind curve. Apologize for it being so tiny, I have a hard time looking at, seeing it as well, but in a nutshell, we've got, we, we've done a sightline assessment to identify what obstructions may be on the curb side, on the inland curb side, that may prohibit or inhibit a motorist as they travel southbound on seeing an object in the roadway, whether it's a car, you know, a ball that crosses a street or what have you, right? So a car traveling at 25 miles an hour as they turn that corner should be able to see up to, God, what's that? I don't, I can't see, what's the, is it 150? Blue?
Yes.
150. So they need a stopping sight distance of about 150 feet, meaning that if they came around the corner and they see an object out there, they have enough time to slam on the brakes to come to a complete stop and not hit it, right? At 20 miles per hour, if you're traveling at the suggested speed because of the, the blind curve, that drops down to 125? 125. So nevertheless, with, with, with the, the issue that has been brought up, I think I talked with Matt about it, we, there's no accident history on this section, we have the appropriate sign out there, a warning sign about suggesting 20 miles per hour, but we'll work with, with Public Works to see if there's any further enhancements we have to do at this location to make sure that the residents' concerns are addressed about this. But as it stands now, everything we've seen right now, you, you've got, it, it is a blind curve, but there's adequate sightlines as you make that, make that movement. Next slide. I think that closes out my presentation. I'll, I'll be around here if there's any questions as we finish up.
Thank you, Mr. Baretto. So just to pick up on that, there's a number of improvements proposed.
I'm sorry, Sean, I just wanted to add, I think for context, because if you are like me, 1,000 trips, 2,000 trips is kind of meaningless, and, and so for context, Pacific Coast Highway carries 30,000 trips. So just to help you visualize the difference between like 1,000 or 2,000 trips, what the existing traffic conditions are compared to PCH. Thank you.
No. Thank you. So associated with that, and looking at all the projects that were coming in, the city staff started looking at streetscape improvements, as well as potential traffic calming that could be designed into Green Lantern to further enhance a number of issues, including pedestrian access along Green Lantern and the other applicable roads. So this is a very small and cut-up image, it's a very large plan, as you can see on the wall. So again, during the proposed break, with the context you've been providing, and I'm going to walk through this here quickly, just to hit the highlights, I recommend, I, I highly encourage both our residents, as well as our planning commissioners to take a look, I have one on each wall, so you can get up and, and see all the variety of improvements that are contemplated, and this is a draft plan, and we're further refining it as we speak. But kind of the highlights, again, as I said, we have wider sidewalks, as well as traffic calming bulbouts at many of these intersections that you can see here, and the wider sidewalks in and of themselves just help nor, narrow that roadway to help reduce speeds along the street. There's also the plan will look to increase overall street or public parking there along the streets, including additional new ADA parking spaces associated with this new coastal overlook that is proposed along Green Lantern. Also, a big part of it is, is one of the comments that we've heard from the residents is regarding parking along the frontage here, along the bluff side, that will now be proposed to be red-curved and shifting all of that parking on the inland side to avoid having potential activities that were less than desirable on that side of the street, especially late at nights, and also does include a trail extension through this area here, you can see the existing area, then connecting to this outlook. You can see here, a small, the Santa Clara updates, improvements here in the change parking management in terms of the, the change in the parking configuration to maximize that, as well as a potential identification for a new trolley stop to tie into our very popular trolley system that we do have here in Dana Point. So with that, Director Luna Reynosa?
Thank you, Sean. So my understanding is that the first time that Councilmember Wyatt met with the residents of Green Lantern, they were some expressed interest in shutting down Cove Road potentially, or converting it to one-way, and that was to provide an enhanced experience for pedestrians and bicyclists to be able to to be able to access the harbor and, and vice versa, although probably people would be more likely to go down the hill than up the hill. And so we are just in the very early stages of exploring this concept. The first thing is that it should be noted, it is an evacuation route from the harbor up, so we certainly cannot completely close it down. We would have to keep it at a minimum open one-way traffic going up the hill. It's also utilized by the fire station that's located adjacent to the library to service the Ocean Institute as well as Baby Beach, and they do utilize Cove Road. So if we were not able to allow them to keep utilizing Cove Road to get down to the harbor, it would affect their response times. However, we think that there may be a way to, with their sirens on and some signage, that they, they could take it down, and it might even be easier for them to go down if there are not cars in, coming up in the way. So that's something that needs to be further explored. It, the, the road is under the county's jurisdiction, so it's not really the city's decision to make. And so we are exploring what process needs to go through the county to even see if this is a possibility. So we're going to start those, exploring that. And at the March fifteenth meeting where Councilmember Wyatt and I met with the, the residents in a neighborhood meeting, it seemed like there was some, some interest and support of this concept, but there were some trade-offs that were pointed out as well in that some of the, the residents living there would, it would take a route away from them in terms of they can't go down Cove Road to access other parts of the city. And so there, there are different trade-offs associated with this, there's some good, some bad. One of the potential positive trade-offs though is, as you noted, what some of those traffic volumes were associated with Cove Road. I think it was like nine-ten on one side on weekdays and something else on the other. By reducing Cove Road to one-way, you take some of that volume off of Green Lantern. So the cars that would be today driving on Green Lantern to access Cove Road, if they could not do that to get down to the harbor, you would be taking that amount of volume off of Green Lantern, which reduces the overall kind of traffic volumes and to some level mitigates some of the increase in traffic volumes that would occur as part of the, the hotel project. So just another trade-off to think about. And that, the image on here is actually in the back bay of Newport, and it's just to show a real-life example of a somewhat similar condition where it was a two-way road at one point in time, and you can see that it's now one-way, sort of coming up, if you visualize, this was the top of Cove Road, and then that right lane is purely for bicycles and pedestrians. And there's a lot, again, of exploration to do on this, but just wanted to show. And then you can see the do not enter signs, so with the signage, just to show a real-life example of something very similar. And back to Sean.
Thank you. So in conclusion, you know, again, we have four different sets of requirements, two each for the hotel projects, the HDCP and the Dana Point zoning code for the two headlands developments, and then the Dana Point specific plan in conjunction with the older version of the Orange County zoning code playing a part in evaluating all of these hotel projects in terms of development standards. And staff is, again, is part of our process and scrutiny, ensuring compliance with all the requirements, including parking, traffic, and heights, as we've stated. At this time, I would, staff would recommend a break, taking that five-minute break or so to let everyone stretch their legs and have an opportunity, both residents and commissioners, to see the, the plans as they're posted in terms of those improvements proposed to Green Lantern with the extra context we've now provided. And then bring it back, open it up for feedback from the, from the public, and then come back for public planning commission, feedback discussion and questions as well. But just quickly, I wanted to, and I will leave this up during this break as well, so you can put it down. I've provided the planners on staff who are working on the various projects and their email addresses. So I'm sure we'll have a lot of questions answered this evening, hopefully in discussion. But should any members of the public wish to contact a staff member regarding a particular question, if it's not answered, you would know which planner to contact associated with the project. So Kirk Nelson, our principal planner, is working on the Canons Hotel project, and his email's listed there. John Champa, one of our other senior planners, and myself are working on the Boutique Hotel, and those are our email addresses, and then myself, I'm working on the Wave Resort Hotel, the Five Star Hotel, the Lantern Point Hotel, and the Green Lantern Streetscape Improvement. So my email address is available there as well. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Do you think if we picked it back up at seven oh five, is that enough time, or? Okay, why don't we do that, and if people have questions, I'm sure we'll accommodate them. Okay, we're going to reconvene the, the, the meeting. Director Luna Reynosa, were we going to have public comments now? Is that what you're proposing? Okay, are we, and are we asking for speaker slips to be filled out, I believe? Do you have speaker flips?
Yes, I do not have any at this time.
Okay, if anyone would like to address the commission, please, now would be your chance to do so. There's a three-minute time limit, and you can either before or after see the secretary for a planet speaker slip. Do we have anyone that wishes to speak? Okay. So with that, does commission, what, what questions, I'm sure we have lots of questions. What questions do my fellow commissioners have? Anybody want to kick off? Commissioner Nelson?
All right, so I'm just going to, I'll ask the questions, and you can figure out who, who gets up and speaks to these. I'm guessing you, Sean, would have some of these, but I believe the traffic engineer can answer a few as well. So the first question is relative to, so we talked about height, and then there's other components to what could be, they're not just as tall, how tall can it be? But the scale, so in a hotel, assuming they go, a hotel goes forward and the Dana Point specific plan, so on the bluff side, what are the other things that they have to meet, you know, or, from a scale perspective? Is it room count, is it FAR, is it lot coverage? Like what are the mechanisms that drive the, the project from a development standard perspective?
Yes, thank you. So we have several building setback requirements, there's landscaping requirements, parking obviously being, as with all projects, limiting factors are, I would say, the kind of key components. There is no FAR or lot coverage requirements, just again, thirty-five feet height, as again, as I noted, no story limitations. So I would say it's a combination of all of those things that I've noted in terms of how that's developed and what can be developed. Obviously, there's going to be on the private side, a monetary number to going down to create more opportunities for parking and how to approach parking valet versus no valet and how that works. So there's a lot of those components that are going to drive how many rooms you can get. So there is no minimum, there's no maximum. It's other than obviously in the HDCP side, but since you asked primarily about the DPSP, I would say those are the limiting factors in terms of how some of the designs and the room counts have gotten to this point.
Okay, so you, essentially you have setbacks, you have other standards you have to meet, what relative to exiting and all that stuff, and you have then a box, and you have to stay within that box, assuming the height, and if they can get twenty rooms in there, fifty rooms, we don't look at the room count, we look at the other, those are the other mechanisms.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
All right, and then I'd be interested to know the tri, you know, trip generation and traffic, how the, you know, the characteristic of a hotel as far as, you know, typical AM peak, you know, residential neighborhood versus a hotel or like retail commercial use, just?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk on, on a daily basis, and then we'll go from there. So on a per-room basis, a hotel generates about eight daily trips. Single-family homes, about ten daily trips. You know, multifamily, they could range between six and seven daily trips a day. Relative to restaurants, retail, on a, on a thousand-square-foot basis, so for retail, it's about forty trips on a daily basis per thousand square foot, okay? On a
I'm sorry, one more, how many was that?
Forty trips.
Per thousand?
Per thousand square feet.
So, got it, okay.
You figure if a, you know, if a, if a house is on average two thousand square feet, that's ten trips for, for one home, it's eighty trips for, you know, for two thousand square feet of retail space.
Right, and, and the big difference too would be the times when those trips occur.
Yeah, times as well, you know, and, and on a, and, and because of retail or restaurant being, you know, visitor-serving, you, you got a lot more turnover and what have you. On a, on a, from a house standpoint, you know, you figure husband, wife, kid may take up six of those daily trips, but you have all these other services, you know, mail, trash, you know, yard guy, et cetera, et cetera, that that drives that trips, uh, up on a daily basis from that standpoint. And obviously, it goes down for multifamily because those services would be able to take care of not just one, but a, a bunch of them at the same time. And then on, on a restaurant standpoint, this is a quality restaurant, not a high-turnover restaurant, um, on a daily basis, it's about ninety daily trips. On a high-turnover restaurant that services breakfast, lunch, and dinner, quality may have late, you know, some have lunch, definitely have dinner. Uh, high-turnover restaurants serve about a hundred and twenty, uh, trips per thousand square feet.
Okay, so three times of, of what a retail-
Right.
Okay.
Exactly.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just make sure I got the, yep, that was the traffic question that I had, so perfect, thank you. I think that's it for me for questions.
Vice Chair Murphy?
Yes, thank you. I just have one question right now. Was brought up some discussion about the natural erosion. I don't know who's brought that into the, oh, yeah, thank you. Because the, uh, obviously, this area is under the purview of Orange County, correct? Am I wrong?
The, uh, the development sites are within the city of Dana Point.
Okay.
Some of the bluff below it is a part of the county.
Okay, that's, that's what I was asking. So obviously, there's going to be some different perspectives, uh, as to whom takes responsibility? If, if there is some sort of erosion, like we, we lost one of our favorite rocks recently.
Yes, I would, yes, there, there's gonna be, uh-
So you actually would have two entities involved, perhaps? The county of Orange as well as the city?
Perhaps.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Commissioner Opal?
I do have a traffic-related question. You had stated that the hotels would increase the traffic about eighteen hundred trips per day.
Yeah.
That is basically two-way.
Two-way, half in, half out.
Half in, half out, okay, just wanna clarify that, thank you.
Before you leave?
Stay right here until we're all done.
If the, if Cove Road were one-way up for traffic and, and, and bikes and pedestrians were, could come up or down, what impact would that have on the, on the traffic?
I, I think, uh, Director Luna Reynosa touched on that. So the daily traffic right now on Cove Road's about, let's call it eighteen hundred trips. So if you take away half of it, so you do reduce it about nine hundred trips on a, on a daily basis. So, and that would be on the inbound side, you know, so coming in from Coast Highway or Santa Clara on the side that the residents live on, so you, you'd lose at least nine hundred trips if, if, uh, if those numbers are right. And then on a, on a weekend, I think it was a little bit more, it was like double, it was like eighteen hundred trips, I think. I'm going off memory now on what the, the weekend volumes were on, uh, the existing weekend volumes were on Cove Road.
Question, Sean, do you have any idea how many square feet we're talking about with all the restaurants? Cause we have two at the Cannons and, uh, and, um, the Wave, the Strand, and, uh, and those are the three places that would have restaurants?
So I can tell you that the restaurant proposed at the Wave was approved for four thousand square feet. Uh, Mr. Nelson, our principal planner can talk about the Cannons two restaurants, but unfortunately, at this time, it's so preliminary in terms of square footage, I don't know what the, uh, proposed areas are for the restaurants for the five-star resort at this time. But if you, Mr. Nelson, do, offhand?
I think Rich had it on his, I don't think there's been a lot of movement, although that, uh, I know LLG has, yeah. So one of them's more of a, a sit-down restaurant, uh, the other one's an outdoor cafe, um, a little, probably a little bit different level of service, but, um, again, there's a restaurant there now. I think they're reducing overall the size and at least the project from LLG's analysis initially is that their overall traffic rates for the site will be a net decrease relative to the Cannons restaurant that's there now and the proposed hotel and the combination restaurant and outdoor cafe.
So just under three thousand, it looks like?
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's what is, and then the existing Cannons hotel would be, uh, uh, I mean, the Cannons restaurant would be removed. Right, yeah, three thousand, so we had.
And Chairman McCann, if I can follow up, um, the analysis in terms of the traffic volumes predicted for into the future did accommodate the restaurants as well as the hotels and assuming that the hotels were at a hundred percent occupancy all the time?
So then, as, I, I think, Sean, as, you know, things come forward, we just have to update if, if there's a change in description. So we're accounting for that, any changes?
And just kinda following up, we, as we are getting these projects, as they are formally coming in, especially with the, the five-star resorts still to come, we, you know, sending this to LLG to update. So, I mean, this is a fluid and we're continuing as part of this, especially the SEQA, that's being that comprehensive analysis, we're making sure we're keeping as accurate and true as possible.
Any other questions? I have several, big surprise. The, uh, since Mr. Beretto is up, uh, what's LLG's role in this? Are you acting as, on behalf of the city as a consultant? Or are you acting on behalf of the developers? Are you acting on behalf of all developers or certain ones of them?
Sure, uh, city staff, city staff representative. So we're the city's traffic consultant, acting as cities. I think city staff, when projects come forward, we review from an access circulation and then as questions come up related to traffic, as these projects move forward, we try and be responsive to what public works or planning departments request are, so, yeah.
Okay, so then, does, when, when the project comes forward, any individual project comes forward, will each project have to have their own traffic consultant? And then they will work with LLG to, to make sure that they're doing it in a methodology that we like and all that? Is that correct?
I think if they want to, um, question or they disagree with the analysis that's been done, they're free to bring on their own traffic engineer to, to do that. If they want to accept the kind of analysis that we've already done, they would not necessarily need to.
Okay, so they can use this cumulative in the SEQA analysis and so forth?
Well, yes, because at this point, this analysis shows us that there are no significant impacts pursuant to SEQA.
Okay.
I can tell you, just to add on top of that, though, the Wave, the, um, the Boutique Hotel and the Strand Hotel, even though it hasn't come in, we've met on it in terms of what we'd be looking for, but they have all individually hired, uh, private consultant and traffic consultant and provided reports in which LLG has, uh, reviewed as a third-party consultant and provided their findings on it and then utilized that as well to, again, further update the comprehensive study that Director Luna Reynosa has referred to.
Okay, thank you. Um, I noticed that the, all the existing volumes were taken in January. Do you plan to retake volumes in the summer?
Absolutely, I, I think that was one of the comments we had early, heard at break and, uh, Mrs. Sinicoria, Matt and I were talking about doing additional data collection just to, again, validate the kind of the volumes we've been seeing and address some of the concerns that we've, we've heard or have heard today, so.
Okay.
Chairman McCann, if I could also jump in, um, we've measured data multiple times, not just in January. Over the course of the last three years, we've probably measured it five times. So we are actively monitoring Green Lantern and would be happy to take counts again this coming summer to make sure the data that we're using for all of these hotels is accurate and current. That's really important.
Thanks, well, I mean, I think the presumption is, hey, we wanna understand at the, at the worst possible peak time, right? Not necessarily Fourth of July, the one day a year, but, I mean, in general, I assume the volumes will bear out that, you know, summer volumes are a lot higher or sign, or, you know, noticeably different.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Do we, I, I'm curious and I'm not necessarily expecting that you know this answer, but do we know kind of what our seasonal hotel occupancy variation is from summer to, to winter months?
Not off the top of our head. I mean, our ability to track that is through the transit occupancy tax that we collect, so we can tell when the hotels have a higher occupancy than other months based on that data. We're always about a quarter behind, though, on that, on that data, but certainly, the summer is the, the peak. I know the shoulder season is, um, following sort of Christmas and into the new year is the slow time.
Sure, okay, I was just curious, like, how much off, off full occupancy that, that gets as it relates to what I could presume would be similar characteristics of, of the occupancy of these proposed new hotels?
And so that's why I did wanna clarify that, just again, to, we, this was considering worst-case scenario, meaning that they are a hundred percent occupied. That's, um, not really in line, in alignment with reality that none of these hotels will be a hundred percent occupied every single day of the year.
Right, okay. So it looks like there's a number of improvements proposed for Green Lantern. How will these improvements be coordinated and assigned out among the various developments? Are they gonna do like some kind of a cost-sharing thing?
So, the first hotel that came before you all was the Wave Hotel and we actually conditioned that those improvements around their site, that they would have to, to do those improvements and we intend to have that same condition for all of the hotels. So, anything in front of and around a hotel will be improved as part of their project. So then there are some, some missing teeth, um, in front of, for example, the residential units. I believe that the city and, um, Matt Sinicoria can talk about this a little bit more, but does have some intent as part of the trail overlook extension to do, um, some improvements in that, that area. Matt, do you wanna elaborate?
Sure, uh, at, at this point, we're studying doing some improvements on scenic drive as you go up above Green Lantern. Uh, that does include a possible overlook, moving the sidewalks around, trying to deal with some of the nuisance issues that we have adjacent to that open space, which, trust me, my team's out there seven days a week picking it up, so we're very much aware of what that is out there. So I think we're looking at doing some of that, maybe in two thousand nineteen as part of some other projects, but all of that's still being worked out and we're unsure of available funding and all those good things. But we're actively looking at opportunities to do as much as we can.
Okay, so if I'm hearing, what I think I'm hearing, you're saying that any frontage improvements directly in front of that development would be assigned to that development, but anything else not with direct frontage is, the city's gonna have to pick up?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, ask one quick question.
Sure.
What is our tax, our occupancy tax, bed tax?
I believe it's nine percent, maybe it's ten percent.
Of the room rate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, wow.
Okay, so that's a great source of revenue to offset some extra stuff out there. How synced is the timing of, of these hotels? I assume, you know, some are ahead of others, or are they all kinda moving together forward approximately at the same rate and level of interest?
The Cannons Hotel has been in the longest, um, and it's one of the more difficult, um, sites, really due to the previous, um, failure of the bluff in that area, um, where it was reinforced by the county and the county does do yearly inspections on that system. But we had a big question then of determining the bluff edge and we actually, um, had Coastal Commission staff and their geologists come on-site to meet with Dana Point staff and the applicant to talk about it. And so it's this reinforced bluff, it's a non-natural condition, but, um, they basically said that is the bluff edge. And so we wanted to make sure that that was well-established before the applicant started spending money on site design because our setback is based on the bluff edge. So that, that took some time, um, and that, I would guess, um, would be ready, I would think, this summer, to get before the Planning Commission. And the other two are not that far behind in terms of on Green Lantern, um, on the left side. They're both actually, I mean, so we've had multiple iterations of reviews on both of those. So it's conceivable that all three could be coming forward this summer. The five-star is the one where we don't even have an official, um, formal submittal on that. It's all been preliminary at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, um, can you just refresh me real fast on what the, what, what the Coastal Commission, would Coastal Commission have potential oversight of all of these, even if it's in the headlands or not?
So, um, the HDCP and the Dana Point specific plan are all part of certified coastal, um, LCPA, certified coastal programs and, which means that we have the ability to issue the coastal development permit ourselves, but they're all within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission, so they can be appealed to the Coastal Commission, all, all of the projects.
Okay, and is it appropriate to give us an update on, on the status of the Wave appeal?
Um, you know, at this point, it's really not in the city's hands at all, it's with the Coastal Commission and, uh, hearing date has not been set for that project. So it's, we're, we're waiting to hear when that hearing date will be as well.
No, that's fine, that's the update. Okay, I have no other questions, does anybody else have any other questions? Is there anything else that staff wants to add?
I did just want to add, I, I was remiss earlier, that, and when I met with the residents of, of Green Lantern nearby, parking was a big concern on Green Lantern and it was mentioned that the, um, chart house, there's a concern relative to, um, employees and customers potentially parking on Green Lantern first instead of in their, um, parking structure. So we did pull up the conditions of approval relative to the chart house and it does appear that it was approved with full parking, um, whatever the parking, um, at the time, it would have been under the Orange County zoning code, um, but a valet parking program was, was required as part of that. So we do intend to go to the chart house during a peak hour, you know, seven PM on a Friday, Saturday, and just check out their parking garage to see if it's being utilized because they are charging for valet parking and it's, um, at a higher rate than what we often see and there's not an opportunity to validate, so we do think perhaps that that is driving people to park on Green Lantern instead of do the valet parking. And so if that's the case, we will engage in a discussion with the chart house to talk about that.
Okay, thank you. I'm not aware of anything else that needs to be addressed or discussed tonight, or relative to that issue, are you? Okay, so with that, I appreciate, I'm sure we all appreciate the update on the status of, of those hotels and giving us some overview and, uh, encourage staff, it sounds like they're being really thorough about everything, geotechnical and traffic and so forth, to continue to, to take that la, same level of scrutiny on the projects moving forward. So with that, we will, uh, close that item and move on to staff reports.
Yes, and so I am looking up, um, we do not have any items ready to go for the next Planning Commission meeting, which is scheduled for April ninth, so we will be canceling that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner comments? Anybody have a comment? Okay, um, I have a question. I don't know if it's, if you can give me the answer or not, but what's the status of Doheny Village zoning effort?
A good, it'd be good to check out the staff report that went to the last city council meeting, I believe, was that the last one? Yes, um, but briefly on that, uh, the status is that, um, staff has been meeting with the Doheny Village Merchants Association. Those are a large number of business owners and a few residents that actually have invested and live in Doheny Village and they had some concerns about the draft code that had been presented earlier. Largely, concerns about non-conforming uses was, uh, a, a big primary concern and then some of the development standards that they thought were more restrictive than what they enjoy today, so that they felt like it was minimizing, uh, development potential. So, we have sort of bifurcated the process into kind of two. One was to, um, look at some, a short-term sort of beautification plan that was largely, um, expressed. So that's like a, a three-year sort of thing, we're gonna come up with a, a plan to do in the short term, look at funding potential, um, and then also to, uh, as part of the, a zone, um, text update or zone cleanup, as part of the, a zone, um, text update or zone cleanup, look at non, the definition of non-conforming use in that area and perhaps expand it a bit, um, to allow some investment in beautification by private property owners, and then in the meantime, continue meeting with that group or a designated sort of working group, um, to really go sort of page by page over, um, code language to ensure that, um, the concerns are being addressed, so the goal still is to adopt a long-term, um, zone change for the area, but to ensure that, um, that, that folks that will be affected as well as the larger community is really on, on board and understanding what those changes are.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, my only comment is I wanna wish everybody a happy Easter. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting of the planning commission, uh, not to April ninth, but the following. Thank you.
That's April twenty-third.